Hey, we'll start off with the roll call. Mayor Lindsey?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim How?
Here.
Council Crane?
Here.
Council Reek?
Here.
Councilor Humbert?
Here.
We have a forum. We may continue.
This time, can I please get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Now make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll move right into item A, our workforce housing project, and I'll turn it over to Councilor Crane.
So, thank you all for attending. We have a few people here specifically at this meeting. Thanks to Chair of the Workforce Housing Committee, Elizabeth Rickenson, for making it. So, we wanted to go through the last several months of work and the direction that we're headed now, just to get input from council to see if there's any major hurdles that anyone wants to talk about. We have been focusing for the last probably month or so on two specific properties here in town that are currently for sale. We'll go through those a little bit. We'll have some update on the grant, we're gonna go through some projected costs. Ultimately, what we'd like to get to is a point where we're ready to go forth and start negotiating to potentially purchase one of these lots. So, you have several things in your packet, some of which you've seen before. The first thing in here, and I'm not gonna go through all of these, so don't feel like going to. The governance document was most recently voted to be sent to legal for review. The only reason I want to mention it here is the way that this is structured. I want to review the order of priorities. So, we are first targeting workforce housing for village employees. Employees are contractors in the Village of Angel Fire are top priority. Second would be employees or contractors who work for a company with a local business license here in Angel Fire. And then, lastly, independent business owners or contractors with local business or applicable permit here in town. Certainly, we could open it up to, you know, people who are not on that list. I'm gonna ask that we, we consider going fairly bold on what this property could hold as far as housing. So, not on this list would be, you know, anyone who might work for someone in Eagle Nest or more, or Guadalupe. In theory, we could open that up if we have the need.
We very agree.
If we have the ability to do that. I don't know that we're going to, but we could.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Crane, I would only recommend that if we're gonna draft this as policy, that we have a catch-all in there that requires recommendation of the committee and approval of the council for somebody that doesn't, because I just can't imagine we're gonna think of every scenario, and I don't want to be caught where our hands are tied. So, maybe a catch-all scenario, but it has to be recommended by the committee and approved by the council, something like that.
I'm not gonna come to the, but there is, there is a clause down near the bottom that has, for exceptions, that is exactly what you said. So, it's like on the last page or something like that, so.
So, the new sheet that you guys have probably not seen, if you will go to the spreadsheet, it's right after the governance document. This is the spreadsheet that I put together with Rocky when the grant writing was resubmitted. If you recall, we submitted an NFA grant. I forget what the initial submission was, Rocky, but, but essentially, our first submission was rejected. It had some material deficiencies in the form of we needed our quarterly audits, which we didn't have the time that we do now. This summary was provided to give MFA a better kind of line item list of what we're looking at. So, the two properties are listed on here. The first one on the top column is Mountain View Boulevard. I talked to Mayor Pro Tim Howe yesterday about this. This is a five-acre plot that is essentially directly behind Zeb's, if you know where that, that dirt is. The other one labeled Twenty-four Freya is a five-acre plot that fronts to Highway sixty-four. It is essentially right directly west of the current DOT lot. So, both properties are about the same size. They have close to the same listing price. I see that Director Epler is not here, but he and I have walked several of these lots to get his opinion on, on how difficult or easy it would be to get utilities and service to these lots. If we continue down the list, you see the lot costs, the engineering costs, several of these numbers. I worked with Santos Martinez planning zoning to get, as well as Timber Tucci, who works for Lindsey Lyons and Home and has lots of knowledge in estimating initial cost of projects. So, your engineering costs, the water lines and sewer lines, you will see those costs are more expensive for the Mountain View Boulevard because you actually have to get to the lot off of four thirty-four. There's a small entrance between Zeb's and Alpine Lumber that will be the access for that lot. So, those numbers are more expensive for that lot. The same with the electric road. If we end up moving forward in this project, we will need to put a road to access all of the various units in there. Director Epler provided the number for fire hydrants, is where we got that. Drift fencing, so that is snow drift fencing. Again, that was at the recommendation of Director Epler. Both properties do experience a fair amount of winter snow drifting. The opinion was the sixty-four lot experiences a little more because of the winds out there. But we ballparked those numbers based on kind of an average. Snow drift fencing varies a lot. You see the, the roll-up, you know, short kind that we see around town, and anyone that goes north from here to Colorado Springs and I twenty-five, you'll see the much larger, heavier snow drift fencing. So, we put an estimate in for that. Subtotal is essentially what the Village of Angel Fire would be providing as far as capital for this project. Underneath of that, you see a light item for sixty HUD certified units. And, and that is why Ryan Mast is here to talk about. We have had lots of discussions. I know Mayor Lindsey got to see one of the vendors that's being looked at, and Sustainability Partners has vetted some of those as well. So, so the proposal of how this would work, big picture, is the village would buy a piece of property. We would put the infrastructure in at our cost. Buried in these numbers is basically everything we, utilities. There is a number in here for a chase to get electrical, water, sewer service out of the ground and up into the structure itself. But the sixty HUD certified units, we have the option of working with sustainability partners, much like we're doing on the water meters. And so, I'm not gonna step on his presentation. I'll let him get to that. But that is just quick and dirty, the summary of what this project would look like. The reason there are sixty units there, both of these properties are zoned high enough to do an R twenty, so we could do a density of twenty units per acre on these sites. We've shrunk that down to closer to fifteen per acre, and that is to leave some room for the roads, the snow drift fencing, some common areas if we chose to do so. But before we spit and polish all those details out, we wanted to put it before, you know, the public and council to get feedback on. So, does that give you kind of a rough idea of what this would look like going forward?
And Councilor Crane, if I could say for the public, this is actually on Freya Lane. If you're driving down four thirty-four and you turn on Freya Road, it makes a ninety-degree right-hand turn and turns into Freya Lane. And they're on Freya Lane, which is maybe clarify helping you find them.
Correct, correct. So, two pieces of property. Honestly, the Workforce Housing Committee ended in a tie vote on which property was preferred. Neither one was essentially significantly better than the other, but both are perfectly acceptable for, for our uses. Both of them are flat-ish. Both of them are dry. There's not a waterway that goes through them seasonally. So, both perfectly acceptable lots as far as that's concerned. I'm gonna pause for, for a minute here and let Rocky kind of go through the, the MFA grant, where we are and where that's going.
Okay, Mayor Lindsey, Mayor Pro Tim Howe, Councilman, Manager of Work. The, I did apply for a second application, a second run for this grant, which is two point seven million. We satisfied most of the deficiencies in the initial request. Other than the lodgers tax, expending the lodgers tax, we didn't, stood in to complete that in F by twenty-five budget. But that was the only one item that I think we could justify in that grant. And so, for the application, you know, looking at these two projects, I couldn't choose one project, because of course, we haven't chosen one yet. But I did estimate on the highest costed one, the, the, not the, Mary. Couldn't remember the word. Yeah, the Mountain View property is what I focused the cost on amount, so we asked for two point seven million. And the results should happen sometime in October when the MFA Board meets again. So, that application is submitted, and I'm just waiting for results. Any questions on that?
So, I don't know if the other person even resubmitted. Are we the only one that resubmitted, or are they?
I, I believe the other person is planning on submitting.
Okay.
They chose to have a meeting to discuss their, their application process. And whereas I chose just to submit our application because of time.
If we get the grant, then, I mean, is there any work that we, is there anything that we can do as council ahead of time of knowing whether or not we can get the grant in terms of purchasing? Or are we wait until we find out about the grant before making a decision to purchase something?
I'm reading the grant. It's not, it's kind of, it's a reimbursement, so it's, it's, the expenditures have to be spent first.
Okay.
Okay.
But, Mr. Mayor, in my experience in reimbursement grants, any funds expended prior to actually being awarded the grant cannot be included in the reimbursements.
Right.
So, we can go ahead and spend money now if we want, but it's not gonna, won't be included. I don't know that for certain, but that is my experience with most reimbursement grants.
So, the post-approval reimbursement.
Right.
Maybe, maybe you did miss it. I missed it. But when do you anticipate them awarding this grant?
October. We had to submit at the, in August here in order to make the MFA Board meeting in October. If we miss this one, we wouldn't be able to meet again until January, I believe.
Now, I, that could in theory slow us up. However, initially, the costs of kicking this project off are gonna be the cost of the lot and the engineering work. All of the underground dirt work, none of that would be anticipated to be done until the springtime. So, we've applied for two point seven. Is that the total amount?
That's the total amount that was available.
That was the total amount available, so odds of us getting all of it, yes. I'll, I'll say there's some other ways, funding that we'll, we'll talk about under item B after Sustainability Partners, that there's another way that we could use any funds that we get to help continue this project, even if we've started it. Getting the money later, I don't think necessarily hurts us. Now, could we wait until October and see if we get the grant? Sure, but then you're gonna have the engineering and all that starting to stack up, which would push our occupying dates back for next year.
Right, because the grant covers infrastructure, it covers construction, and it covers building, it covers everything. And being a project as close to, what, nine million dollars, whatever that was.
Yeah, nine point one.
Nine point one.
Yeah.
So, there's plenty of other items to spend the grant on.
For sure.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir. I, I will tell you that with a project this size, I mean, Mr. Epler's here, but my guess is that we're gonna have to contract out this work, all the infrastructure work. Our staff is extremely busy right now. Just keeping our current systems operating. And so, just so you know, that process is gonna take probably two months.
So.
And, and we're gonna be, if not right at, but maybe past the no dig time of the year.
Oh, for sure.
Four, nothing's gonna happen.
We're anticipating that this project would kick off in the spring.
Okay.
Not, not sooner than that. It does lead me to a question. One of the reasons I'd, I'd like to go, go bold, but Director Epler, if you wouldn't mind, this underground work, obviously, if we have to put it out for RFP, if, if we had adequate staffing, a lot of this we could self-perform if, if we had more manpower. Is that a fair assessment? The, the water sewer, the road work, or, or are we a long ways out from that?
The road work, yes. The installation of the infrastructure.
Would be competent, sorry, good evening, good afternoon, Councilman here, if you're aware. I'd be competent in the road construction, but not the installation of the infrastructure, even though I have staff that's experienced in maintaining it and repairing it, but not in installing.
So, I think long-term, we'd like to get to a point where we could self-perform more of this. You know, but that's staffing, training hours, that, that long-term, not next year, year after, long-term.
Not this project.
Not this project, but this type of work, waterline, sewer line, roads work, we have hundreds of miles of more work like that that we could do, that we'd like to see. But you would need a lot more staff.
Adequate staffing level. Now, either one of these properties would be a good opportunity to train people.
Sure.
On how to put in waterline and sewer line, because they're both very easy.
Right, but over the next thirty years, we're gonna spend lots and lots of money on waterline, sewer lines, and roads. The more of it that we can self-perform, what's that differential ballpark if we could self-perform versus having to RFP it out?
Differential and price.
Yep.
Cost.
How much savings?
Significant. Significant. Could do, if we had the, the talent and the, and the staff, twenty-five percent of the cost. Contracting it out.
Well, you could, you could do it for twenty-five percent or save twenty-five percent.
Do it for twenty-five percent. So, for a village that needs fifty million dollars or a hundred million dollars of infrastructure over the next many decades, that's a huge savings, but we gotta have the people to do it.
Well, chicken and egg, you gotta have a place to live.
Right. Exactly. That proves to be the biggest challenge in, in, in re, repeat skilled staff at this point.
Mr. Mayor, I would also say there's some other challenges. Logistically, we would have to think about it. I mean, my estimate, we'd have to probably double our water department workforce. And then, in the winter months, we'd be struggling to keep them busy. Because if we were fully stacked, we could keep up with maintenance. If, we're not fully staffed, but if we were, we could probably keep up with maintenance. We don't have any room for new, or very little room for new construction or new additions or anything. And then, since we have such a long no-dig season, we have to figure out what to do with those people in the winter months. So, and, and the twenty-five percent is a direct cost. I think that's an accurate number. But there's long-term costs that you have to contemplate, like, you know, they can only work during the summer, so you have the cost of these staff the whole year. So, when you factor that in, maybe closer to thirty-five percent. Still, it's a huge savings either way. It's just, those are all things you need to consider.
So, for round numbers, and I had pulled it recently, you were able to give me a sheet of, I think at the time, the village employed seventy-three was the count. This was months and months ago.
We have seventy-seven.
So, seventy-seven today, and back then, only about half of them lived in the village.
A little less than that.
Less than half. So, what, for now, what would full employment look like for you? What's that number go up to if, if every one of his departments was fully staffed?
It'd probably be another twelve. If his, was fully staffed, yeah. Actually, seventy-seven is the number. If we were fully staffed, we have twelve openings. So, actually, we're at sixty-five or sixty-six people actually working right now. So, seventy-seven is FTEs, full-time equivalents, and that doesn't count PRNs or, or temporary people that we hired during the summer. So, seventy-seven full-time equivalents.
Got it. Within Public Works, I believe it's twenty-eight employees, four of them live in Angel Fire.
Right, so if, if we're going to move forward with this, we're necessarily going to use this as a recruiting tool, but it will also be offered up to existing village employees. So, my point there is if we only did ten of these units, those are gonna get filled up pretty quick, I imagine.
I would think so.
Thank you for answering the question. I, I'm gonna save a few more of my comments. I, I'd like for Brian to, to talk about the actual product. You've got some sheets in your packet of the most current product you've been looking at.
Thank you, Councilor, and good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, Councilors, those managers. Real pleasure to be here again with you today. My name is Ryan Mast. I'm with Sustainability Partners. We're a public benefit company. Provides, helps provide turnkey solutions for, for communities across the country. I'm the lead here in New Mexico. Met here a couple of times previously to discuss the water meter project with the village, which is currently under construction. I believe we'll get an update on that later today from the, from, from the staff. About the same time that we were looking at the water meter project, we started discussions with the village on a potential workforce housing solution and our ability to participate and help enable that to move forward. We approach these projects much in the same way that we do any of the infrastructure that we get involved in, which is really just a partnership, understanding what the needs are and, and trying to find the right solutions wherever we can. We try to provide sort of turnkey solutions that really reduce not just the risk of, of the, you know, long-term performance of the infrastructure, but also that we can meet the speed and need that you would need for, for certain, to, to serve your population. Joining us via Zoom, we also have Derek Fanning. So, he'll be here to, to answer any questions and, and talk a little bit here in a minute from Champion Homes, who is the manufacturer of a current vendor that we're, we're considering for this, for this particular project. Derek, I didn't know if you want to introduce yourself real quick?
Hey, everybody. Derek Fanning, Champion Homes.
I'll give him an opportunity here in a minute to talk about the actual units that we've been, we've been scoping. I will say, this is, there's been several iterations thus far. We're not certainly locked into this one, but I think we're getting closer and closer to what a solution might look like for the village. This is obviously a tremendous need, and there's a high capital, upfront capital cost to this, which presents not only an issue for accounting for that in your budgets and grants and other capital sources that you have, but also sort of a long-term asset management issue. So, that's where we're coming in to try and provide that solution on the turnkey side. The way that, as Councilor Crane broke down, this sort of split responsibility for this project works really well for us, whereby the village would retain the, the property and do the below-ground infrastructure necessary. All we're really doing is coming in and providing the capital for the units on top. And we would provide all the capital and project management support, delivery, installation, and ongoing maintenance for that, and then convert all of those costs into a month-to-month, per unit, per month basis. So, essentially, what we're trying to do is align to what a rental on, on that property would be. One of the reasons that we've been kind of going back and forth is we were really trying to be cognizant of what affordability actually looks like here. We really want to meet that need. So, from our side, we've, we've got a lot of flexibility in how we've approached that. One of them being, we want to provide a robust product that actually is the size of the unit that's something that you need. So, the current iteration that's in front of you is a modular off-site construction unit that, as Councilor Crane mentioned, I've been to their factory, or not me, but our, our team has been, I believe the mayor's been there as well, to just understand and note that it does meet our standards for robust construction. It can meet the, the loads, the snow loads and other, other codes that you have up here in, in Angel Fire. The other thing is, is we look through different units in terms of spec. Do we want three bedrooms, two, one bathroom? Do we want two and two? Do we want three-two? This is sort of the middle of the road on a two-two, but by no means is this the, it has to be only this. By any means, we can do a mix. We can look at all of this, but this gives us a good baseline for what a, a pricing of a unit might be from our perspective, and then how we can sort of structure this to meet your need. So, what we've done is we've scoped out up to sixty of these units to meet and whatever lot that's ultimately decided upon by the, by the village. And then, what we, we would do is we would work with the manufacturer to make sure that they are built on time and then delivered to meet the need for, for that. And I'll let Derek talk here in a minute about their process for manufacturing and delivering timelines, estimates, estimates on that. I will say that, you know, the other thing that we were really cognizant of and looking at is we didn't want to create a liability for the village in terms of maintaining these long-term. Obviously, we want these to be something that is, looks nice, people want to live in, and actually is, is helping to meet their quality of life standards. And so, just like any of our infrastructure, we built into our pricing long-term maintenance support for all of this. So, what that would look like is we would have annual maintenance available for anything that needs, that gets broken over time, but we also are accounting for replacement costs and things. So, there's not gonna be any surprise cost over time. There's actually a lot of predictability for the village in terms of having these units maintained, looking nice, and I, and, and be something that can be occupied over, over the entire useful life of them. So, you know, at ten years, we have accounted for replacing all of the appliances and these. Losing windows over time, et cetera. And for us, because we are essentially providing that, that risk protection for the village, we are accounting for all of those in that, in our, in our contract. Because the village already has a contract with us, this is very simply just another, essentially a work order. Tell us what you need, when you need it. We can deliver all sixty at, at one time. We could break them up over time. Really a flexible tool to just ensure that what we're doing is meeting the time which you think that the village needs them to be occupied and used by, by folks who are either working here or other places. Two other real quick things on this is we are not land speculators or property speculators, so our interest in these is not the value and the increased value of either the property or the units themselves over time, strictly the, the stuff itself. So, you know, the fact that this is, you know, we're not, we have no interest in, in the land, in the ownership stake, any, any of that, in that piece, but also just the units themselves, if they accrue value over time, the value that we have in it is actually just the money that the capital would have into it. So, if it continues to accrue value, and the village would ever want to exit their contract with us, that buyout would not be at the current market value. It would just be on the depreciated value of the units themselves. So, just, just note that we're not trying to be property speculators here or take advantage of the village here. We're actually just interested in the, in, in putting the capital into the stuff itself. So, Derek, I just want to turn it over to you real quick, if you wanted to talk just briefly about your construction method, your ability to, to sort of turn around, turnkey solutions, sort of long-term support that you would have with, with Sustainability Partners for, for maintaining and upgrading the, the units themselves.
Sure, so, you know, that's one of the things we offer as a manufacturer, kind of like he mentioned. We, we want to try and do a turnkey solution for you as well. So, what we would do is, is initially, once you receive these units, we'll give you a thirty-day window to go through each one of them to really kind of figure out anything that needs to be addressed from a factory standpoint. And then, of course, we would send our crews out to, to address all those initial, what we call punch list items. We do offer a manufacturer warranty, which is gonna basically cover your structural, plumbing, electrical, basically all the things that are controlled within our environment, that would be something that we would have to service. And then, most of the home is gonna be covered under the warranty by whatever the, the, the product is. So, you know, appliances are gonna be Whirlpool appliances. It was gonna be covered under the Whirlpool warranties and, and things like that. So, as far as the construction aspect of it, we've kind of dialed in as far as what the needs are for that particular area. So, we've done upgraded roof loads. We've done different insulation options to basically make these the most efficient and, and, and really the right homes for that environment. What, what other kind of questions, when it comes to the construction, do you guys have?
I have a question. Where would the units be built?
Well, I'm located in Mansfield, Texas, and right now, this is where we've decided that these units would be coming out of.
And do you have the capacity for this?
Yes, sir. We do.
What would lead time on sixty units be?
Sure, so that was, you know, part that I was fixing to lead into is it really come down to you guys telling us how you would want these to come to you. What a lot of the community owners that we deal with will do is they'll do them in blocks of ten. So, essentially, we'll build ten houses, ship them all within a span of a couple of days. They'll get them all set and ready, and then we'll build the next block of ten and so forth, so that way you're not having to figure out where to. Having to figure out where to put all these houses before the pad sites are ready, or you can't keep up with how quickly they're coming in. So really it's going to be determined up to you guys how fast you want to move. We can keep up with just about however quickly you need to go.
But from the day that we decide we order, we place an order, how soon can we expect to have one in Angel Fire?
If you're going based off the current times right now, I'm looking at about five weeks. Now that may change between now and. Whenever we're ready to do that. So it could be, I try to keep the sweet spot around six weeks. That's, that's my goal is to be no longer than six weeks.
What type of skirting are you going to use for these to help, you know, insulate the crawl space to keep the. Clots should freeze underneath.
As the manufacturer, there's, there's certain things that, that we're not going to be doing. Skirting is one of them. Basically, as a manufacturer. We're going to provide the units and then whoever's doing the install aspect of it. Is going to be the ones who are going to be doing your, your, your porches, decks, skirting, things of that nature. So. I can't necessarily speak on that. I can give recommendations, but I'm not going to be the best person to answer that question.
So the way we budgeted it, and, and this was a number I got from the Veterans Wellness cabins that, that, that we're, we're going to go. It was one insulated case coming up to the bottom of the unit. That, that's how it's budgeted for now. I'm not saying that's how we're going to do it, but that, that was the number we plugged in to do that.
And any costs associated with that, you know, of course, we can, we, we either account for on our side or your side, just depending on what, what needs to happen. I mean, we can make sure that it, the numbers make sense one way or another.
And, and the models that, that we're looking at currently, these are considered a HUD model, which would mean if it was set on a proved foundation, it is. Real estate, a real property. It's not a. Are these more, I know there's different classifications, different inspections. At this factory. In other words, there's the park model and then the HUD model. And we're looking specifically at HUD models.
So we, we've looked at both. This was the one that was selected. Derek, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the Ascend series we're looking at right now is the HUD model. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct. We, we went through and looked at a lot of different sizes of these. This manufacturer makes some tiny versions of this, sub four hundred square feet. But the, the cost per unit, this was the better bargain. We can talk about that a little when we go through some of the estimated rent values here, but it just didn't make sense to look at setting. You know, a bunch of one-bedroom, one-bath as opposed to the two-bedroom, two-baths. It was a large point of discussion at the Workforce Housing Committee that. A, a single person would struggle to afford the rent on this without a roommate. But when we looked at the one-bedroom, ninety-home version, it was the same problem. So from just an ease of. Ease of budgeting the project and I think broader appeal, you're, you're going to have a lot more. Two-bedroom, two-bath would appeal to more tenants than the one-bedroom, one-bath was, was how we got there.
So you're looking at probably bringing in twenty of these for starters? Is that kind of the idea? Or wait until you get your.
And I mean, it.
Surveys back.
We can stage it any way we want. So we, we'll go through the, the surveys. Before we get to that point, let, let's talk about the rents and how that would function.
Sure.
So this was not a number that is, you know, set in stone anywhere, but round number. Eight, the pass-through rent on this unit here with no modifications was going to be about thirteen fifty a month. For a two-bedroom, two-bath. Okay. It's a little on the higher side versus what some of the, uh, other local options are. However, this is a financial transaction. We have the option to buy those numbers down. If we wanted to put more capital on, from into it, we could buy those rate numbers down to whatever we chose.
And that's where the grant could come in.
Or how, that's where the grant could come in. So if we get an extra three hundred thousand dollars of grant money, we throw that in to the pile here. And that number comes down. We haven't run the calculations, but. Figuring out what's affordable is a little challenging, but based on the other rents that we know in the area. For a freestanding, no shared walls, no neighbors above, no neighbors below, thirteen fifty was not a bad starting point.
And I would add that, that number, you know, if we model it out, just like all of ours, that, you know, that's, that's including, including the full turnkey package. So that's the purchase of the units, that's the delivery, that's the installation cost, that's the tax on the units, that's maintenance on those, that's replacement of. Of, of the appliances at ten years, that's replacement of the roof at twenty years. That's all those costs, everything baked in there. It's just a one, one, one number passed through on that. And I would add one other thing because we're flexible in how we can structure this. You know, we ran the numbers for this type of infrastructure, you know, rental prices in New Mexico range. Roughly three to five percent increasing year on years. That seemed somewhat, and that's what we found. So we added a three percent growth in that and that cost year over year. On the water meters, we added a one percent because it's a much more stable thing. You don't add, you don't increase water rates that frequently. We can go up, we can go higher and that brings those first year even further down, lets it grow. I don't know exactly what it means, what, what. Rent growth here is, but we can be flexible to try and match that growth the best we can to reach a more affordable price.
The, the only number we don't know is so far the way we've talked about this is we wouldn't plat this lot to be individual units. It would be one lot owned and operated by the village of Angel Fire. So I don't know what the county property taxes on such a thing would be. That's something we'd have to figure out, but I don't know that there's a good example to use, but that's a, a small add to. The number, but I, I don't know how to even calculate that for something like this right now.
And I think the one other thing, Counselor, to your, to your point is, you know, there's an economy and scale on this as well, right? So for us, you know, we, initial estimates were, we were scoping six to ten units, right? So we start scoping sixty units, even if they're not all delivered that first month. Maybe they're delivered within the course of a year. From our perspective, it's a much bigger project. So we're going to be ordering sixty. So we'll get better pricing from the manufacturer as well. So there's, there's a way to look at that and approach that as well, saying you don't need all sixty. On April first or May first, but let's at least program and scope for that and get better pricing. We're cost plus, so whatever pricing discounts we can get from the manufacturer, we're going to pass through.
And the same way on the infrastructure, doing all of the roadwork, all of the underground, your mobilization costs are going to be much better off doing that as one as opposed to. Staging out in multiple settings. So I'll move on to the last point of this. I, I, we could be here all day on this, but. The workforce housing surveys. So we're going to get some good data from those for sure. We're going to get. Some information. Manager Weir and I have a meeting tomorrow to, we finally have got all the IT snafus. So we're hoping to get the, the employer one sent out tomorrow. The other way to go about this is to back into it. To figure out if, if we're going to move forward, how many village employees do we have? Can we take advantage of this? Once it's a real project. That would also help us decide how many two-twos versus how many three-twos we might need. But before we'd ask Manager Weir to go start polling existing employees or using it as a recruiting tool, we want to make sure that. This is a real project and something that would actually move forward on. So instead of guessing or taking survey data and trying to. Figure the mix out, we can figure the mix of units out based on actual tenant applications from the Village of Angel Fire. If, if there's units above and beyond that that are available from the other employers in town. So that's. I think a pretty good summary. Questions, pain points here.
That's a long way to. Tow a, a house.
It is, it is. One of the upsides to doing it that way in the long, long term is if, if these things come in. And at some point, thirty, forty years down the road, that property needs to be something else, move them.
Go ahead.
Move them over to the mobile home states. The village by that time will own these free and clear and can. Pretty much do whatever they want with them. So it, it, it allows that to be built and occupied in twenty-five for all of our workforce needs. But then potentially be something else down the road. Elizabeth, have I missed anything? I, I, I appreciate you being here and I feel like we didn't let you talk much.
No, I think we're good. I think the only thing I would add is that to. BJ's point about the real estate versus, you know, not what is a titled. Not titled, but with, you know, like an MBD title type thing, is that if you bring them in. And you don't set them and then you decide to move them later, then they, once they're moved a second time, they're no longer. They're no longer able to become real estate, which is what I remember.
Three.
Is it three?
Affection landing.
Your mortgage.
Okay.
You can't get mortgage on.
I was thinking, was it, could never be moved? It had to be moved straight from the manufacturer, boom, and that was it.
But you know, one, one thing I'd probably add too is I think you're going to save a lot in county taxes if these are personal property versus real estate.
Versus commercial real estate.
Just first, real estate. I, I don't know, but that might be something to consider.
We, we don't pay county.
We don't.
We're government agents.
Got it. So these owned and operated, there's no property taxes on these for us. We, we, we did consider and have met with several different developers on more of a stick-built project. I know the mayor and I have talked that, you know, something for Plaza del Sol or Allen Fields, maybe a better fit for a stick-built. The challenge there is to try to touch the numbers of a project like this. That project's probably going to have to be seventy-five, a hundred plus units. Just to get the scale large enough to compete with this on a, a per square foot basis.
I do have one other question. I'm sorry for, I mean, I can come into the thing, no disrespect, please, but. You mentioned that if in the future, the council wants to purchase, the village decides to purchase the units outright versus having, you know, do the. It would be based on depreciable, depreciated value versus whatever the current market value is at that time. How, what, how many years do you depreciate on?
So what we tried to achieve on this was a forty-year useful life. So, but that's going to be. Average on a lot of the, the more durable aspects of this, we'd actually be looking at, because we're not looking at this as real estate. We're looking at this as an asset, a piece of infrastructure. We'd actually come in and estimate what's the value remaining, what's the remaining value on the appliances? What's the remaining life of the, of the roof? What's the remaining life of the windows? We actually break it down. You know, we don't share this as in our letters, but for this, we broke it down into. Ten different categories of, of useful life, because that's how we're modeling the, the maintenance schedules that we're going to have to put into that. So we'd have somebody come in and actually help us, us, you know, figure out what remaining life it is. It just depends on you, on even a unit-to-unit basis. Did we replace the roof of this already? That's going to have more value. If we haven't, then it's going to have less value, but that also means there's probably going to be a maintenance reserve that'll be returned along with the unit, right? So we're, we're counting. I hate to say depends, but it really, we're breaking it down on an actual use, remaining useful life of that particular component of that asset. Insurance. We have accounted for insurance from the aspect of an asset. Whether that needs to be more or less for hazard insurance, et cetera. We, we, that's a great question that I think we would have to, to work out.
It is, it, it would be, I think in the governance document, there is a requirement for renters insurance for the tenant. But as far as the actual insurance of structure from catastrophic loss, that would be a cost I think we'd have to account for.
Right. So we, we built into our pricing already, you know, I don't know how, I'd have to go back and see what the actual amount was. But what it would cost for us to insure it from an asset perspective, right? To ensure the, the value of that, like thinking that this can be moved anywhere, right? What is the insurance for that? So that's already built into that cost. If that's something that could be negotiated by the village on their own and account for that and just have us be listed in there and then, then that line out would just be removed. And, and that might be a better way to approach it. You might get better pricing than, than we would on the private market.
We'd have to talk to self-insurers, tell them, see.
But it, it, it's a, it's a great point. It's, it's not in there somewhere we'd have to.
We know they do it because we visited the site in Ria Doso. Exact same thing.
Right.
We didn't ask that question, but I can't imagine that they're insuring it through anybody else.
So I guess if we could, to wrap this up. Again, it ended in a tie. I didn't get a vote because I'm the council liaison, but if, if you wouldn't mind speaking a little bit to the advantages of the two different sites as the committee saw it. Yeah, thank, thank you very much.
Before Ryan goes, can I ask?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'll say. Or I can ask, ask a question. I, I just want to understand on these units, so. You know, we do have people who have these type of units throughout the valley. And, and from those people, the biggest complaint is utility bills. Because they're generally all electric and, you know, and these types of units insulation. You know, can be a challenge. And so we see, I, I know there's some units in Eagle Nest where. The, the utility bills are higher than the rent. And so I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit about insulation and the. The type of heating or the options for heating that would, I had to try and keep utility bills down.
Sure, Mr. Aaron. It's a great question. You tell us what, what needs are, but I would say, well, I'll turn it over to Derek to see what the different options for that might be for this. I mean, we can certainly scope, however. Whatever makes the most sense.
So I, I think what we've based the, the initial specs off of was doing a complete upgrade insulation. Ceiling, walls and floors. And I believe we spec those with a fully gassed house as well. So we've, we've kind of taken into consideration. Most of what you've kind of mentioned there. For our insulation and ceiling, we've maxed it out. We do an R thirty-two ceiling insulation. R nineteen in the walls and then R twenty-two rating in the floors. We also do a anniversary, what we call an anniversary insulation package, which also goes back and it seals. All the penetration areas that there may be some air leaks come through. I mean, we build these houses, we put them in, in areas. You know, like yours, but Colorado, a lot of the different places. And, and really, we, we build one of the most energy efficient houses out there. Every one of the houses in our Ascend series are Energy Star certified. So in order to get that certification, we have to follow the Energy Star regulations. If somebody comes to the plant and they inspect these things during the build process. So when it comes to. You know, obviously the, the energy savings, all the things that we've put into those already are going to help tremendously keeping that cost down.
I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there is a community of these, not maybe this exact spec, but of, of, of your product up in Salida. On the river up there, if I'm not mistaken, could, could we get some energy usage from that? I mean, I'm not looking for private data, but just a ballpark to manage your Weir's questions of the utility costs associated with your product up there.
For sure. I believe our Salida project is a park model project, but I can still. Get some of that info so that way you can have a general idea of where they're at. But yeah, I absolutely had no problem doing that.
I, I know there is an option as well for full air conditioners if you want, mini splits if you want, total electric, gas. It, it's a pick your. Pick your preferred method and, and cost obviously on the front end.
You're, you're the HVAC engineer, so I know that you're not a fan of mini splits, heat pumps in this environment.
I, I, mini splits will work great up here in the shoulder season, but the dead winter, you, you're going to need. A, a, a full supplemental heat above and beyond that mini split. You'll see mini split manufacturers to claim to make heat down to five, minus five, that area, and they do. But we spend, not this last winter, but if, if you're at minus fifteen, minus twenty for hours and hours, which we get some of those nights. That mini split is not going to give you enough heat. You're going to have to have baseboard electric or radiators or some other type of thing. The most expensive option on the front end is easily going to be a propane heating system. It's going to be the best long-term from a bill's perspective, but if you do that, you've got to then figure out. Do you bury one propane tank and meter all the separate devices? Do you put a tank per unit? It, it's, it's going to, it's going to add some complexity and cost, which is okay, but it's a decision point we haven't necessarily got to. At this juncture yet with what we really want to do with it. We wanted to get kind of a, a base level of here's what we're looking at before we iron all those details.
And, and I just want to make sure that you brought up a good point that there, this is propane. We don't have gas here. We have propane.
Yeah, so ours, they're interchangeable. I mean, we, we can do it either way.
Your propane costs about double, but it actually has about twenty percent more BTU content per pound. So you actually get more, but you're paying double for it. So anybody that can do natural gas can convert to propane easily as well, so.
I think from our perspective, and it's such a good question, ultimately we're trying to provide what's actually useful, right? It can be the best solution there. So as the counselor mentioned, you know. We'll, we, we look forward to continue to iterate this to actually own in on what the actual specific need is. Even, even on the configuration of the units. And, you know, to our point, we're not. We're not beholden to park model versus head model versus either, like, so we can be flexible on what that is. We're sort of approaching them both the same. The construction method and the way they put them together is relatively the same. So we get the same useful life out of them. So these extra components on the heating. So these extra components on the heating, on the appliances, do you want us to drop in a, a washer and dryer as well? All of those types of questions over time, we're, we're, we're more than, more than willing to, to include and, and discuss what that's gonna do. To, to sort of influence the, the bottom line was.
And thank you. If you give us just quickly the kind of a summary of the pros of both different pieces of property.
Okay, as Elizabeth Wicketson, workforce housing chair, committee chair, um, so as you mentioned, um, we did, we had, we had four um, committee members present at our meeting where we kind of voted on the properties and we did end up in a tie. The benefits I, that we talked about for the lot behind Zeb's is that it's closer, it's walkable. Um, that was the, that was kind of the big thing. The, the ease of access is nice and um, in terms of being in the village center. People needed to walk to work or wanted to walk to work, ride their bike to work, they had, maybe that would be an easier opportunity for that. Um, the, in terms of the other property out on four thirty-four. Sixty-four, sorry, on sixty-four and Freya is that it's a, it's a larger property. So maybe it provides some additional space for some common areas like picnic tables, because this is going to be where people are gonna live and, you know, we don't want it to look like what military barracks or anything like that. So anyway, you know, it'd be nice if they had some open spaces as well included. And um, easy access out there in terms of, you know, multiple endpoints from, from the uh, either from Freya or from the highway. Um, and if you're out there, if you look around, there's similar housing. So there's, there are several manufactured type homes. So, uh, you know, I, I just don't know if that really matters or not. But it was just an observation that we had was that it was, there are some similar homes around it, so. That was our benefits. I, if it's okay to add, I'm assuming it's okay to add this. To, I think it was today or yesterday, one of the um, committee members who was not in attendance at the meeting stated their preference would be the property behind Zeb's. So if you, I don't know if that accounts officially or not, but it's just, that was. So we kind of have a three to two preference, but as we mentioned, either property was fine. Nobody had any problems with either one of them. They all, they both will fit the, you know, will fit what we need, so.
Thank you. So, so again, the hope here is to get to a point where we could put an offer out on one of these lots and then begin all of the work and layout that will need to be done through the winter. Um, being ready for spring to do dirt work and hoping to have occupiable units this time next year.
Even if you did an offer, could you make it, uh, put it up sixty days? And you could use that money for the purchase.
Well, thank you all for putting up with our long presentation. It's been, it's been a lot of work. Thank you to the committee members who are here and the ones that couldn't be and Brian. Uh, and for Mr. Fanning to present, it's, it's all the other problems we wanna solve, we're gonna need the people, so.
Moving on to item B, uh, Angel Fire Dark Sky Ordinance Review. Turn this one over to Counselor Crane as well. It's a good thing you're on.
Thank you. Um, so we have several committee members here in attendance. Uh, this committee has been quite busy. We got a big jump start from having active committee members, which is a big help. We got another jump start by getting uh, documentation from Los Alamos, New Mexico, that recently passed their own dark sky ordinance. So we had some good templates to work off of. We also had some visitors come in and review from that ordinance. Um, this current draft that you see in front of you. So um, I know that dark sky may not be the most important thing for all of the council members, but we had a leg up with a good crew and a good template to get this one where it is today. So um, what you've got in front of you is the current draft of this ordinance as it exists. And I know in talking to uh, manager Weir, one of the big points was if we're gonna do an ordinance like this, it's gotta be enforceable. It's gotta be something that we could actually um, put on the books and do. So the first thing that you've got, Paige, uh, is just a summary of the definitions uh, that go through. Uh, hopefully you guys have had some time to dig, digest this. I, I'm gonna summarize this um, fairly quickly. I'll let the other folks, you know, speak to what's here, but really all we're trying to do is protect our beautiful night sky. We, we have great star viewing opportunities here. The committee believes, and I agree, that we've got some opportunities for tourism. Um, that we could put on some star viewing uh, opportunities uh, to get some more people in town. Particularly on some of those weekends where we're looking to do more events anyways, that, that this is a good opportunity. Um, I will say that this version is a little less aggressive maybe than the first pass. Um, as far as limiting uh, total lights. So if you go to the second page, there's really two main sections that you're gonna wanna look at. The first one, outdoor lighting fixtures under general provisions B, section C. All outdoor lighting fixtures shall limit output to eight hundred lumens per fixture. In round numbers, that's about a hundred watts. Okay, a hundred watt light bulb is about eight hundred lumens. Um, everything in dark sky references lumens because it, it's just a better term to use for, for distance and everything else. So if you continue reading on, eight hundred lumens per fixture, but no more than eight thousand lumens per acre for the residential zones. So a one acre lot would have ten one hundred watt light bulbs as a maximum. Uh, we also then added a higher number specific for the overlay district. That number is sixteen thousand per acre, uh, again, in the same uh, section there. So you're basically twenty light bulbs on an acre residential, or I'm sorry, ten light bulbs on an acre residential. Twenty light bulbs on an acre in the overlay district.
Commercial or residential.
So it, it's specific to the overlay district. Um, we, we haven't specifically addressed it, but one of the things for your condo associations. A lot of those are gonna be required to have an exterior light there. Um, it, it, it doesn't specify whether it's commercial or residential. It's just overlay district. So if you have a commercial property or a multifamily property in the overlay district, it's the higher number.
Yeah, the, I mean, and some of the question would be like sidewalks.
So uh, commercial um, lighting for, as far as the Village of Angel Fire is, street and parking lighting is addressed further down in section H. It, it kind of talks about the different nanometers of lights. Uh, light may only emit uh, within a hundred feet below the installed position, so it's a slightly different standard. Um, we have asked for, but we haven't received yet. Los Alamos ended up replacing a lot of their streetlights when they brought their ordinance in. The village would be responsible for those costs as well, and so we've asked for how much each of those approved fixtures would be. So we can come back with a, a total number there. Um, the other big thing in here is uh, the lighting curfews. Um, so section D, under uh, general curfew, all lighting should be extinguished right now. It's set at ten P M. Uh, there are some exemptions uh, in there for government agencies and non-residential businesses. Exterior lighting should be extinguished at ten P M or within one hour of close of normal business operation. So if a restaurant is gonna be open until ten thirty or eleven or whatever, they, they, there's an exemption there for them. So um, I, I think this is a, an excellent document. We, we tried not to go uh, too wordy for it. Um, if we'll skip over to.
I think again on the curfews too, it'd be something to consider is sidewalks or condos and stuff. People come in and go, they might come in after their few.
Sure.
Well, I think there's also insurance concerns in businesses. You know, that have to be taken into consideration. I know that there uh, some lights that are put in specifically for that reason. It wasn't that they're looking to light it up all night, it's that they're required to.
So, so I, I've talked to, um, just cause I know A, A J Farmer at Alpine, he didn't have that particular clause. I'm not saying other businesses don't. Um, you know, we, we'd like to get some input obviously from the other large businesses in town to see if they have that particular problem. But ultimately what we'd like to see is, is as little light after ten P M as possible, is, is essentially what we're aiming for. Um, there is a clause in here, let me find it. Uh, EMS, where's my hundred and eighty days?
Like a date.
Uh, so there is a time to compliance. So once we pass this, if we did, there is either a two-year or a five-year time to compliance. In other words, you're not, this gets passed and you've kind of go replace all your lights here. One, there's a runway there to get that done. It does ask that any uh, permitting that has gone on within the last hundred and eighty days, that they would have to come back and comply with it. So essentially if somebody applied for a single family permit last month, that if we adopted this as is, they would have to come back and provide a page showing that their construction, when it's done, would meet this. In other words, somebody who applied for a permit last month, that house is not built yet. They would, as this is written, be required to come back in and resubmit for the lighting only, to show compliance. Um, I, I, it's in here.
Oh, plan submission C and then small direct G.
Have you discussed that with Santos?
A little bit, um, not, not in specific detail. We discussed it with uh, the folks from Los Alamos. I, I don't know that there's a legal reason why we couldn't do it. It, it's gonna rub some builders uh, the, the wrong way, obviously, to have. Well, and, and we've messed that number around a couple of different ways. If a hundred and eighty is too long, then a hundred and twenty, then sixty, then ninety, wha- whatever it is that makes sense. The whole idea was anything that's recent, where they haven't gotten to rough electrical, they're probably not even to framing yet. Those types of things where it's an easy change to make now. Um, I know that um, submissions that have been going through the architectural control committee, since the dark sky committee started meeting, we've been telling everyone that's applied, hey, there may be something here that you may have to comply with in the future. Obviously, it wasn't at the time. Um, but I think it's something we'd like to do, just to limit, you know, the biggest complaint we have on, on the homes right now is um, people who come in and put shielded lights, so they're, they're, they're compliant type, but they'll ring the entire socket of the house with thirty plus three inch can lights and downlight everything and light that house up pretty bright, so. Um, so uh, those, those can be on switch, they could be on short-term rentals. Those are the properties we see the most complaints out where it's a short-term rental. Somebody turns the lights on, they leave and now they're on for the next two months, three months, whatever it is. Um, floodlights are not allowed in this. Uh, motion lights are, but floodlights have been struck in this, if that's something that needs some discussion. What, what have I skipped over here from a summary perspective?
Uh, just then the um, uh, two years of exemptions and then the enforcement penalties.
So the enforcement and penalties would, would be a daily, um, just like any other P and Z violation, you know, gallblum reefs. Or without construction, it would fall into that same type of, of uh, finding activity. One of the things that would be needed, and uh, we won't go through it today, but outreach, so there is a lot of useful information that the International Dark Sky Association provides. Um, Gary Zentara that's here in attendance today is a non-voting uh, member of our committee. He operates um, um, a telescope facility up in Taus Pines, I believe. So that's his interest. Was that?
Yeah, the Girl Scout.
We built one there, a big Girl Scout mansion, but I also have a, a two-story observatory. You know, I'd be happy to show it in for you to.
So we would hope at some point to do a full presentation of the benefits of dark sky. We didn't wanna tack that presentation onto this time today, but there, there are lots of good um, materials and presentations that can be given to the public writ large at public meetings before there is any vote, that sort of thing I think would be appropriate. We just didn't wanna add it on to the time today.
Might I just add, there was another restriction in the uh, language, and I don't know exactly where it is, but it has to do with mercury vapor land, because those are not allowed.
So it's, it's a type of light and a color of light.
Yes.
The, the organization has figured out that different temperatures of light travel further. So the entire goal is whatever lighting you're creating on your property needs to stay on your property or as much as, as can be accomplished.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the council, um, if we're gonna implement a new ordinance like this, my recommendation and, and we're seeking compliance, my recommendation is that the council consider some sort of grant program, reimbursement program for people to come in, compliance, put a deadline on it. Uh, my experience is you just catch more, you know, bees with honey. So if we add some sort of program like that, where we incented people to bring their properties into compliance, I think it'd be uh, more successful and it'll be interesting, the first time we issue that twenty-five dollar a day.
One other thing, one other thing that's in here that, that may not have council support yet, um, but this was taken directly from Los Alamos. Properties that do not have a dark sky compliance are ineligible from short-term rental permits. So that may not be ready now, but most of the other communities that adopted this have gone to that level of compliance for short-term rental properties. So if we, if we wanted to strike that from this version and consider it a later date, we certainly could, but this is a pretty aggressive goal, but I think it would get us um, to a spot where we'd have a pretty desirable dark sky attraction up here.
So question, how does Christmas lighting?
Chris, yep, it's in here. Um, let me find it. Christmas lighting.
D, C, big D little C.
Big D.
Big boy. Under general pervade.
Under lighting.
You're packing outdoor sports facilities, towers, signage, lighting curfews. I'm sorry, give me that again.
Big D little C. February lighting, holidays, string lights.
Got it, yep. So um, there are, uh, there's a process put in here. If somebody wants to do extra lighting, they can come and apply for a village permit to do so. So if we had, it, it talks about the sports facilities. If we do end up with lights out at the soccer fields, those are basically a ten P M cutoff or when the event ends. If somebody's going to do an event that requires extra lighting, like the drone show or something, it gives the village the ability to issue special exemption permits for that. Uh, and specifically to the Christmas lighting. Same thing. It, it is still on here, it's out by ten. So it is in this version, not been exempted from the ten P M cutoff. But there is a provision, it, it, no, no blinking. Um, one of our former committee members had somebody that put up red and blue blinking lights to keep the bats out of their attic, was the theory, um, and just left them on all the time. Um, so we, we, we've seen lots of people with uh, complaints and I think we've captured most of the major points in here.
Is there gonna be a difference in credit in residential versus commercial? It doesn't say so here. For Christmas light, and the reason I bring that up is one of the initiatives that we're looking at through the tourism side of things is bringing out the Christmas lights, the festivity around the holiday season, um, because in the years to pass, it seems to decline. And so it's actually something that we, on the tourism side, help to encourage. And obviously wanna, I think ten P M is a reasonable time to turn it off, but at the same time, we're a holiday destination.
So and, and again, we could, we could simply modify that. So temporary lighting, holiday string light rope lights must be seventy lumens or less for a single bulb. Can't exceed a thousand lumens for the total site, can't create dangerous care, can't constitute a fire hazard. Uh, temporary lighting may be only be installed up to ninety days. So if we want to extend that, we could. If it's, we, we could also take that same section and add a, you know, the week of Christmas or the two weeks around Christmas. We wanna extend that or e, e, extinguish the curfew during those two weeks. You know, that is another thing that we could consider modifying and specifically to the Christmas.
Gentlemen, Mayor, Council, uh, so to explain, we, we use the term holiday lighting rather than Christmas lighting because we want it to be all-inclusive at any holiday for any purpose. So, and, and that's where the ninety days also comes in, because it's typically November, December and then January when the hype of, of not only Christmas, but the skiers coming to see the more festive things. So. So, Christmas is included in holiday, but the term holiday may be expanded to other festivities, depending on uh, different, uh, traditions.
So, if, if we wanted to extend the holiday window in time, certainly something we could consider.
Was your concern more the number of lights or blinking?
I think big restrictions on holiday lights in general. I think there's a lot of people in the community that would like to see more around the holidays. Uh, in other words, I, I don't know what a thousand lumens total looks like.
Right, but it's per site, so like, we're talking so much for Frontier Park, so much for Village Hall, so much for around Lowe's.
Thousand lumens for Village Hall.
Per site.
Per site, per, yeah.
So, Frontier Plaza, for instance, is much bigger than a residential.
But the sites are per acre, so the larger your acreage is, the more lumens you could get, but we, again, could tweak that to.
Yeah, if you needed that more clearly defined, a thousand lumens per site, let's say, uh, the library is a site, which is much smaller than Frontier Park as a site. So, we could, instead of saying per site, we could put per acre or per square foot, decorated, decorated square foot or something.
What I would like to come, I, I am in full favor, as you know, of protecting our night sky. I mean, it's absolutely uh, beautiful, and, and so I'm, I'm, I'm in full support of this committee, but what I want to be cautious of is a few things, the, the, the technicality of the enforcement, and the fact that this will be mainly being enforced when no one's at work. So, who this falls on, how we deal with it, how we gauge these.
So, there's a, a couple, so in, in here right now, it is written, um, a documented timestamp picture is allowable. We talked to the folks at Los Alamos, they bought a, I think it was twelve-hundred-dollar lumen meter that you can set on the property line, that will give you a number, right? Um, there are thirty-dollar ones, but they opted for the more expensive, you know, commercial style. Um, enforcement in the summer, to your point, is gonna be tricky because of how, how dark, how late, um, you know, it gets dark. In the winter, we may still have code enforcement around, um, you know, at four-thirty, when it's, it's dark, so, um, certainly lots of options to do there, but the, the, the way to enforce it can either be done via somebody turning in a complaint, in other words, much like a noise complaint, um, or sending someone from the village out with a meter to say, are you above or below the number you're supposed to be at?
And, and we do, we have, as our next step, a, a very intensive education program. Uh, we were going to maybe see if we could tap into the new, uh, marketing, uh, committee, or, uh, vendor that the village has, the, the new village voice in, in the water bills, uh, public presentations and stuff, so, so that we're not just catching people by surprise. We pass this thirty days later and wham, all of a sudden, we're, we're really planning a, a, uh, intensive public education program behind this, which would include not only the technicalities of so many lights off and on, when they are, but why, you know, the, the preservation of our wildlife, preservation of our skies, the opportunity for astrotourism. We tried in, in all of our, um, uh, verbiage here to address, there's five major principles that we wanted to adhere to from the, uh, International Dark Sky. Uh, the first principle is, is it useful? And in my mind, I, I interpret that, is it necessary? Like, really, is this necessary? Is it targeted? You know, is it shielded, and the light is only targeted to where it needs to be? Is it low-level light? We don't want shiny and, and glare and everything all over. Is it controlled? We can control it with timers, we can control it with a manual switch, and is it warm-colored, which is very important to the wildlife and the glare and stuff, so. Everything we've written in our ordinance really tried to address those five principles of, uh, good, friendly outdoor lighting.
All right, and, and again, I, I'm in full support of all of that, my, my two concerns, once again, the holiday season, and, um, just what we don't want to do is have an ordinance that we can't or simply won't enforce. Uh, but frankly, we need to go through, and, and we continue to do so, ordinance isn't, if we're not enforcing, we're just gonna take them off the books. Uh, and so, what I don't want to do is add one that is, uh, without a clear plan, so I appreciate the, the penalties and so forth, but maybe some clarification on what department this falls under. Uh, if it goes strictly to code enforcement, um, again, how it's gonna be enforced, who's gonna bring the the meter out to the property, um, at eight, nine, ten o'clock at night, uh, however you see it working. And again, I, I think these other communities that have done this, maybe could offer some insight there. Um, those are my only two concerns.
Mayor, could I make a, a comment? I'm out here in internet land.
Mike overbeats in VS.
Yes, uh, I don't know, maybe this was developed, you know, by the committee, or maybe it was sort of benchmarked from another community. It was Los Alamos, this ordinance that we took as a baseline, was that my understanding?
Yes.
There are, uh, a couple good examples, I would, if we haven't already reached out to them, it could be easy. West Cliff and Silver Cliff, Colorado, small communities up there on the Front Range. Uh, they promote and are, are members of that International Dark Sky community. So, it wouldn't take much, maybe reach out to them, you know, what kind of ordinance do they have? How do they inspect, and all of the other questions that were brought up? Uh, I've been there before, uh, and it, they're very nice communities. I, I don't know how they promote it, but it's on their website. They're part of the international, one of nine cities in the US are part of that International Dark Sky community.
Well, I think that's a big resource.
Well, uh, Jake refers to our contact with the, uh, Los Alamos County one, but we actually had probably upwards of eight different communities we looked at. Uh, and, and we got to the point where things were repetitive, but we did pick and choose, and we weren't just looking at only one sample as our template, we, we drew from, I think, at least eight.
Well, there's a version of this in Taos, there's a version of this in Las Vegas, New Mexico, I think we looked at Fredericksburg as well, and tried to amalgamate that all together and take the best of what we could and keep moving. Uh, and I don't think there's any reluctance from the committee to consider the holiday lighting and extending that, and because we do have a beautiful snow-capped valley, that.
Can we say extend the holiday lighting, is that the?
I'm not looking to extend it, I'm not looking to extend it, I think to ninety days, to me, seems very reasonable. Um, my concern is how strict you're gonna be on the lumens of holiday lighting.
So, we need to more clearly, I, uh, instead of saying perhaps a thousand lumens per site, how many lumens per acre, or?
Again, I don't know what a, I, forgive me, I mean, I know what a lumen is, but I don't know what a thousand lumens looks like, so I don't know if that's a lot or a little. And again, I don't know, for instance, I'll just point out, there's a lot of businesses in town, mine included, that we contract with a company in, uh, Lubbock, Texas, and they, we've bought all the lights, and every, they store them, every year they bring them up, put them up, and every year they take them down. I have no idea how many lumens I have purchased. And so, I would love to, I mean, again, just get a better understanding. I know that's the education standpoint, but I'd like to see that before, not after the ordinance is passed.
Yeah, we, we can understand that a little better. Because like, like I said, the, the library being one site is different from your little business location versus Frontier Park, and if they all at one thousand lumens, your business location may be lit up like a satellite, whereas Frontier Park would be dim, so.
Well, I, I, I suspect, um, Dark Sky International has some references to this. You know, maybe the picture's worth a thousand words, here's what a house is with full perimeter, you know, maybe style Christmas lighting and, and present that and say, here's, here's what a thousand lumens is, here's what ten thousand lumens is at Christmas.
Oh, okay. I mean, I'm not looking for Clark Griswold, but.
You were mentioning, uh, commercial a little while back, we also have a petition. I don't know exactly what section, but it's in this proposal, that, uh, we don't have the LED built or effect lighting, that you can see for literally miles away. And you're, and we want to restrict that, or actually
That is.
I think a lot of the signage ordinance has already been covered, you know, in the signage ordinance section. Signage has its own section in, elsewhere in the ordinance, and it's very detailed, we, oh, I can send you that reference.
And then not skiing, how long, when is not skiing over, is it over by?
Yeah, it should have been eight.
Yeah, eight o'clock, the lights are out.
That's more than a thousand lumens.
But nobody wants to keep paying that bill for three hours.
Excuse me for buttoning, but just being an astronomer.
Yes, sir.
After ten is the perfect time in the wintertime, in the months especially, because the sky has crummed down, and it's waiting for photography or anybody that.
And, and I agree, and, and to your point, but we're also, you know, it's dark at four-thirty-five o'clock. So, again, the ten o'clock in June, July, might be a little early. And I don't know if that can be, but again, those are, but yes, I mean, there's nothing better than a winter sky.
And of course, we're just trying to address the properties that are egregious. You know, someone accidentally leaving their porch light on or something, but, uh, we, we, there are some egregious properties, both residential and business that are fully glare, and, and those are the ones we want to, and, and those, of course, will be the ones, uh, that we give our educational material to, give them plenty of warning, plenty of time, and saying, you know, we really need to do this, and again, come back to the education program.
And, and much like with the noise ordinance that we currently have, most of that enforcement is driven by neighbor complaints.
And, and we, we're probably gonna start there, uh, until we get more, um, capacity at the village level for, uh, compliance officers type of thing, but we have to start somewhere. So, at, at this point, you want us to, uh, what would be the procedure? We come back and fine-tune and address these?
I don't know if the rest of the council has anything, I mean, uh,
I think it would be, I would like to see more, um, interviews with other commercial property owners, rather than just Alpine, because Alpine closes at five, sure not a twenty-four-hour.
Or another, they're not open after dark.
Right.
So, the, um, gas station abrams are addressed in here, but to your point, some of those businesses are open beyond just gas afterwards, so you, you're, you're primarily talking about, you know, Lowe's, um, the businesses up and down the overlay, how you interpret condominium complexity, so like.
Yeah.
You know, where, where. We need to get some input from the H A managers on, on the condominium complex. Um, I think this is, is this the only committee we don't have a resort person on? I think by other committees, I'll have a resort person on.
So, I would suggest that, that the committee take these comments into consideration, and bring them back for another work session before we actually vote on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for this, with, there's some things that kind of bother me. Um, because, and I'll use my own house for an example. There's no one around, no other house right around my house, the fire department down below, the judge lives down below, but, and that does not, and it's dark there at night, and I do have, uh, and I have a lot of walkways, and I do have solar-powered low-density lights that light the walkway. I would hate to think that goes off at ten o'clock, because no one can, people could fall, and then you've got people injured, you've got lawsuits, and my house is not the only one like that. That kind of bothers me that we can't have low-density lighting on walkways.
Yeah, walkway.
Yes, and that's one of those lights you can't turn on. Yeah, we can say, go put a fire over it, every night it can.
Essentially, those walkway lights are shielded to begin with.
Yeah, but I mean, here, it says they will be turned off.
But, that you can, uh, the, one way to address that is the motion detector, and, and that's what I have on our porch, is they're off, and if, if someone walks up to the porch or the, or, or sidewalk or something, they come on, and then we chat, I get my UPS package, and then the guy goes away, they come off again.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm talking about.
These are solar-powered walkway lights, they're not hard-wired.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, our, mine are solar as well, and their motion detector is solar.
Motion detector.
Mm-hmm.
But, you gotta be careful, because technically, when the motion detector kicks them on, you may be in violation of the ordinance.
I'm just saying, that kind of bothers me, because you could have people injured, you know, even they come walking up to your house, and it's pitch dark, and they tumble.
But, to me, that wouldn't be egregious, I like, or do you have a lot of people coming to your house after ten? And so, if you. If you have, yes, and you have your lights on at ten, that's not egregious, and I don't think you're gonna be turned in for violation. If it's something that's on bright every day, every night, then we would need, you know.
As a Phil's point, and to your point, you're right. Most likely, there's no one over those, you're gonna turn it, but I will say, I think everybody at some point has had a neighbor, and they get an opportunity. And, you know, we don't want to go down that road either.
Right, maybe it can be worded different.
So, so in theory, you could go back to the, um, the, the low-level solar walk lighting and put a, put a, a number associated with that.
I don't think that's a big problem, and, and again, I, I'm fully aware of the, the egregious, you know, and we lived, our first home was back behind, uh, Lows on Alamo Gordo, back when it was the Valley Market, and when Roger came in and we were so gratefully did, and revamped that store, but they put those parking, and we lost our night sky.
Yeah.
You know, and they're on twenty-four hours a day. So, but again, for his point, it was, it was a security concern. Uh, because, and again, I'm grateful for Roger, and I understand, and I think for what he did, but we've suffered from that, you know, firsthand.
Yeah, we have proof, and I, I, I have actually videos that I can show you that glare, that type of lighting actually will hide whoever the cat bar boomers are, that are coming in there or vandalists. Whereas if it's shielded lighting, you can actually see what's going on better, because there's nowhere.
Los Alamos specifically brought that up, that they had some pushback from law enforcement in Los Alamos, but they went through the tests, and said, if you're chasing somebody, your, your eyes get blinded by that light, you can't see, you're not gonna see much further than the outside, so.
In their commercial districts, they just switched the lower lighting, and they actually had a reduction in crime. Yeah, part of our education. That, that light doesn't equal security, and, you know, for even a residential, someone says, well, I have to have my light on, in case a bear comes by, or in case a person comes up, the, the outdoor lighting doesn't equate to security. And we, we can cite studies on that in our education program. Okay?
Very good.
Thank you, thanks to my committee editors for attending, and thank you for your attention and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. Hey, with that, we'll move on to item B, review our personnel ordinance update, and I'll turn that over to manager Weir.
Hey, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm here in, uh, extremely cold weather, bowels, but, uh, I'm suffering through it.
Yeah, we'll discuss our draft or our fire adaptive committee ordinance, and I'll.
We, uh, our committee had two working sessions on this, and we were aware of, and in fact, many of you, uh, visited, uh, Ria Dosa and had a good presentation by their forestry department on their fuel management, uh, plan, defensible space ordinance. So, you know, in our discussions, um, we said, you know, we know that we have a, a, an ordinance and a code. Uh, we really liked theirs, I mean, there, I can mention a few, uh, disagreements with that statement, but as a whole, we liked it because, A, it was, uh, it's been slashed it over ten years, um, now they do have individuals doing inspection, too. Um, it's been legally reviewed, and, um, uh, and so forth. Uh, the forestry department is, you know, maintains that. I'll, I'll read from an email I sent you out, but, you know, what has been the result of the big fire, uh, this summer in Ria Dosa, and how has the defensible space ordinance had an impact? But what we have here as a draft is really their, uh, the Ria Dosa's, uh, defensible space ordinance, fuel management standards. Um, in essence, we uh, recommended to be adopted as is with some question marks, um, highlighted in yellow and red. Um, if we don't address. If we don't address in this as, as our previous ordinance has and as their ordinance has any incentives uh, for meeting the code and standard or any penalties, you know, that's another, another topic certainly. Our original plan, you know, as we went in from April, May, June was to have a, a, a code like this, you know, finalized, uh, approved and everything so we could have a, a town hall. That's not going to happen, obviously, you know, with the timeframe we're at now. Um, but, you know, our recommendation from the fire adaptive community is, is as you see it there um, in the draft three version. I won't go through it in depth. I mean, I'll mention a few things that came up in the discussion um, that is included in this standard and one, it's, it's a bit more complicated than our standard with respect to how many crowns can be touching with respect to elevation and that is an important factor. And again, the, the, I guess, a little bit of the complexity for the average person uh, trying to read this and understand it from that elevation uh, perspective. Made this read uh, from Dick Smith. He said in that, an email, I forwarded it out to you. I'm sorry that the first one you couldn't open, but I went ahead and sent it again. But I asked uh, basically uh, last week and he responded is that our ordinance thinning kept the fire on the ground uh, as intended. One of the things that we found was the cause of the houses in the villages to burn was lack of maintenance and home hardening. The other thing we found to be the culprit were railroad ties, wood fences that were tied to houses or decks. So, nothing in our current code deals with home hardening. Um, our committee has discussed that and uh, wish to, you know, as the inspection process could take place, that that be addressed as well. Questions or comments?
Uh, uh, I, I have a couple of comments here. Um, where this draft has gotten to big picture, all of the finding language has been stripped out of this draft. Um, there, there is not broad support, I would say, from the committee to have the village, the village jump right to enforcing this as a final offense. What we have instead focused on is providing a certification process for home and landowners to get a certified letter from the Village of Angel Fire Fire Department stating that their property is in compliance with our defensible space ordinance. In other words, only carrots, there's no sticks in here. There's a few different reasons for that. One is the timing, but the main reason is there's a fair amount of trepidation on can the Village of Angel Fire handle the amount of material that this is going to generate? And manager Weir and I have had several meetings recently with uh, newly appointed chief um, Vance. Because at one of the last fire adaptive committee meetings, there was a comment made by the slash department that they think they can actually handle getting after the old material that's in the pit. Not the old, old stuff that's been pressed into the walls, but the piles that are in the center of the pit still. And that was a pretty big change. Um, y- you may recall, we've had several discussions about the tub grinders, the hogzillas and putting out an RFP to come grind um, our leftover materials. The feeling is now, the last comment we have from chief Vance is they are able to keep up with the amount of material coming in every day. And based on their personnel and the air curtain burners, they can handle about five times the amount of material that they're bringing in today. Okay? What none of us know is if we get to a defensible space ordinance and we're at the finding stage, however many years down the road that is, that process is going to have to grow exponentially. So the focus has turned entirely to defensible space for certification only, not chasing landowners that are out of compliance. So there is no language in here about needing a defensible space ordinance for short-term rental permits. All of that has been stripped away. What remains is simply taking the Ria Dosa standards, creating a defensible space ordinance to get a home or property owner that certification letter to go back to their insurance company. And it may not be the size and scope that all of us want it to be, but I think the feeling is we're going to need some baby steps of growing this thing into just from a pure materials handling, handling perspective. So, um, I think there were some committee members who would prefer to jump to the end and get to the finding authority, but there's not consensus there. And so what's in front of you today still needs some more input from the fire chief, but big picture. Um, it, what we don't want to do is pass an ordinance that we can't enforce again.
Well, and we're going to be looking to hire a forester.
Correct.
So should we wait to have the forester involved and before consulting on an ordinance?
I, I think it would be a great idea. We've even talked about, do we send that forester to Ria Dosa to intern for some period of time to learn? Cause this is essentially with some modifications based upon what we already had in the Ria Dosa standard. So if that forester can go learn from Dick in Ria Dosa, how to do, that's what we're trying to talk.
Learn, because the forester, he knows a lot more than we do already.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I think that's a key part of this.
My understanding is.
I appreciate where the committee is going with this. Get something.
Get something. We have four or five applicants.
Five applicants.
For the forestry position, which is also the, it, it's ambassador and forestry rolled into one from the grant writing opportunities. I don't think we've conducted interviews yet because that person will report to chief Vance and we wanted to give him some time to get up to speed, obviously with, he's got a very busy department. So, yes, that, that is where we want to get to is hiring a forester to do inspections to this standard for letters on.
So I think they need lots of supply.
Yeah.
Uh, but again, I think this is, what a good, I, I liked the direction that committee is getting, getting something off the ground. Mr. Hart, did you have something you'd like to add? If, if you would, just come to the podium.
Just sure.
One of the things that was considered and I've had some advice from uh, people who have been in this process before is that we have to be careful that we don't have a one-size-fits-all ordinance. And when I spoke with um, wildland chief, um.
Romo.
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 Romo, yes. He said he only has two people who are qualified to do those prescriptions. So I absolutely agree that we need to have a forester who does the prescriptions ASAP. And then can we have our wildland team contracting to do that work? If they're not called out on uh, emergency, uh.
I'm sorry, what work is that?
Well, to do the prescriptions, do thinning prescriptions.
Just the prescriptions?
Well, if that's on private property though, is what you're referring to.
Right, on private property, they'd be paid by the property owner um, a fair rate, but it would be a way to earn their keep.
It would have to be a market rate?
Market, well, and the, uh, I understand the USDA uh, fixes that rate. So that's just a suggestion.
One thing that has come to our attention this summer too, with the, the, I mean, obviously the summers are a rainy season, but with number of big rains, you know, two inches in an hour, three inches in an hour. It's really become apparent that people, areas that have thinned lots, recently thinned lots. It's almost as if, you know, it's the same effect of a forest fire going through in the sense that we get a lot of water coming off those properties. Washing silt into the culverts, into the bardages and essentially the culverts, creating, creating issues there. So one thing that we may need to look at, and I don't think it's been taken into consideration, is some kind of silk fencing um, for a period of time after a property's been mitigated.
Also, you know, I think you prob, um, you know, when you thin certain areas, you, sometimes you need to thin in stages, right? To allow root systems to grow and become strong, because if you, let's say you let one tree in a twelve-foot section, high winds can just blow that tree right down because the, the root systems haven't had a time to catch up with.
So, if I remember right in Ria Dosa, they actually, one difference that we've talked about but haven't adopted here is they use some of their chipping material to help with that erosion control. There's a maximum amount they allow because they don't want to have you chip it and just turn it into a fire hazard, but with that.
And the grade of.
Two to four inches is what I've heard is acceptable and it will um, protect the soil and uh, it, it, it's a mulch, but it will also degrade into soil over time.
I'll just say.
Well, you can't have large chunks like the old chipper we had. They'll all wash away. So they need to be the smaller.
Come up with something because um, again, uh, Greg Grappler, his crews were pulled off of other projects simply just to open up bardages and clean out culverts. And, and I'm not saying that specifically from them lots, but they certainly contributed recently, uh, uh, then blocks, you could see where a lot of it exists. And it has to do, there's a lot of factors, the grade and so on and so forth, but I think it's something that needs to be taken into consideration.
I did pretty extensive thinning on areas that had up to a sixty-degree slope. And as long as you kept machinery off of it, you fell trees, you took the material off and you didn't tear up the ground with machinery. I never had any problems.
Unfortunately, with all the contract, no, no contractors do it without machinery.
But, most of the lot thinning for home site building up here is all machine.
Yeah.
Not, not if there's an existing home, but for a new site build.
Right.
There's a, there's a mini extra dose up there just pushing stuff.
That could be a caveat if you're going to protect the, the ground cover, but yeah.
So, so maybe we come up with, with two, if you're doing thinning and chipping remediation, but if, if you're going to be, because you're supposed to get an encroachment permit to cut the driveway in to get your equipment onto the lot per thinning, could we add that silk screening in there as opposed to in the defensible space?
I think it could be, get him sort of one-size-fits-all, it's not every lot. Um, but I think it's something that not in those inspections, that's to be a part of the prescription. It's just something to consider in addition to just the thinning.
Right, erosion control.
It's one of the questions that we're going to be discussing in our next week's uh, fire adaptive community committee. And I know maybe you're more updated on it than I am is the five-year plan for, you know, the defensible space ordinance and how much volume QB cars or whatever the, the metric is that they're going to be bringing and are they going to be bringing it to the village to be processed?
I have, and I, I, I don't have an update for you on that. We, at this time, we don't have the capacity to process it. I'll, I'll tell you that. I don't know what their plan is. Anything else?
Is, is there a timeline on the forestry interviews and hire at this point yet? Because if, if, if we're going to have the input in that there, that's still a ways out.
Um, we could start the process at any time. We simply haven't at this point. Um, it, it wasn't um, a priority based on the fact that we had a new chief who is right now no pun intended, drinking from a fire hose. Um, we, we um, we don't have the capacity to handle much more than we're taking in naturally right now with no enforcement. Um, there, there are plans to, uh, as I believe the mayor said earlier, to burn the um, slashes currently in the pit, the old chipping pit. And uh, transfer the uh, burn, the burning process to that pit because right now we're limited to ten by ten piles. Uh, so we should be able to increase the capacity uh, in a single burn. Um, and that will allow us to handle more volume. And, but the bottom line is we don't have an answer for the volume. And we know it's coming, but it's, you know, earliest it's going to come is next spring. When the Simran Watershed Alliance begins their projects. Um, so we could start that, you know, with direction from the mayor, we could start the interviewing process now. We just put everything on our plate. Um, we have held off and.
Uh, could I just add a comment? I'm not trying to, you know, press forward faster than we should, but you know, the original ambassador coordinator uh, job description and all of that uh, was taken from the model up in Colorado. Um, and coming this fall, there are a number of, of uh, virtual courses, trainings in that program as well as home hardening. And I was hoping that, you know, if we could make a selection, uh, you know, I don't know how soon, but they could be a part of it. It's funded to go to those training programs. So, again, maybe the, the job descriptions changed now to be more of a forestry oriented one than the one that's on paper. But uh, I'll just throw that out as a, as a region to move ahead more quickly, in my opinion.
So th- this position, just the council knows there's three primary uh, roles that this uh, individual will fulfill. One is um, uh, going out and I don't know if you call it inspection or review of properties and making recommendations to homeowners on what shouldn't, what needs to be thinned. Uh, number two is then uh, eventually the enforcement of uh, whatever ordinance is passed. And also where the term ambassador came from, uh, responsible for the education of the public and and trying to uh, build compliance with the public uh, for the ordinance that we have. By the way, another thing that wasn't as pressing was uh, and the reason it would prioritize is we don't have an ordinance, I mean, we have an ordinance, but if we want to start enforcing that ordinance, it's going to be a mess.
Well, it's like you said too, with compliance, there's people who complied with the prior ordinance, you know, and, you know, how do they, you know, how, how did they get into this mix and they have to thin more trees, you know, did they thin it in compliance? You know, to be fair to people who were in compliance, how are they going to be affected by the new ordinance if, if they're required to do more than either?
I, I guess I would just like it's not, not see us get stuck in a chicken or egg here, you know, we, we need the forestry guy, we need chief Vance to, you know, get caught up with all this, but we also need to pass an ordinance that we actually, in this case, not enforce, but
I, I think.
Help our residents with.
Chief, chief's been in mind. Um, obviously we posted the position, we have the applicant, I think it's time to pursue that hire. Uh, we'll go in front of your committee and let's get things moving forward.
We do have a few other challenges um, that haven't, haven't been related to the delay, but um, we did have, um, we were trying to find a vehicle. We found an old police vehicle that was going to auction. The fire department's going to try and repair uh, for this individual and uh, there are a few other just uh, budgeting related things like uniforms and, and so on, but um, yeah, if uh, if I get that direction, then we'll start pursuing that.
Well, I, I apologized because chief Vance is worried about resigning fire station one. We've asked him to jump in on the FA one. I mean, he's, he's got a lot on his plate right now and we, we'd love to add a person here that could kind of take this off of him, but if, you know, if that's doable, if there's the right person in there that, that could not add to his daily troubles, hopefully it'll help. Yeah.
Sure.
But she, with uh, chief Romer.
Because he's going to have to train somebody because even though there are, there are person with uh, I don't know about degrees, but education and forestry, um, still there, you know, they're going to have to be set up on how to work within the village and how to um, you know, I mean, there is some, anytime you bring in a new employee, there is some management attention that's going to be required.
Sure.
Okay. Anything further?
If I may.
Yes, sir.
I have thoughts on just uh, hearing the discussion, you know, you know, on the discussion about the uh, erosion that's uh, that's, that we're more susceptible to after thinning the, the tree. erosion that's, uh, that's, that we're more susceptible to after thinning the, the trees. What, I want to know, and one of the things that we encountered, and it was pretty common, were, uh, were branches and stuff that plugged the culverts were washed down the creek.
From the piles.
Yeah, and not only from piles that were wrongly put within the bar ditch, but every time brush is piled up and I, and they do a really good job of picking up as much of the small stuff as possible, uh, but there's usually a little bit of stuff left over. And the water brings it off the hill and also plug the culverts. And in regards to, um, you know, mulching all of the areas that are disturbed with, uh, small wood chips. You know, we saw the water move, uh, 150-pound boulders off the hill onto the road. Wood chips aren't going to stand a chance. Uh, but it's another thing that, uh, when it does plug in a culvert, gets wet, swells, sticks in there pretty tight. Something to consider. Now in regards to erosion control, uh, depending on how it's classified, but when a area greater than one acre is disturbed, a stormwater pollution prevention plan is supposed to be put into place. Now granted, it could be a, a two-acre lot. When in reality, where the equipment goes isn't going to equate to a full acre. Depends on, uh, it's open to interpretation. Some people within, uh, you know, water quality bureaus will take the overall size of the lot that the work is being on and establish scope of work by the perimeter. Something to consider, you know, I think requiring best measurement practices like silt control, is something that's going to be hard to enforce because then we get in the realm of designing what's going to work. But it would be something that should be strongly encouraged, uh, particularly with contractors that do slash removal. Uh, anybody who's been, uh, around a fire after new fire lines have been cut, so forth and so on. Or the mitigation plan is Forest Service goes in and burns up roads and, and, and stuff to stop that flow of water flowing down. Now, over the years, we've experienced obviously a lot, a lot more people thinning their lots and doing the right thing. We've had a significant natural die-off for a station also. That with the change in our weather patterns has absolutely had an effect on how waters flow around here. And, uh, there, there are, uh, some lots that when fully thin, they, they will have an impact on the adjacent road. And I just hope that that stuff is, uh, considered.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? Would you join me?
Yes, yeah. I'm so sorry, there is one more thing.
You're not applying for the forestry job.
Uh, I do want to mention that our current situation and method of, of how the slash is being, uh, disposed of. I am in charge of the stormwater pollution prevention plan for the public works area, which encompasses where we're burning. Uh, ash is one of the most difficult things to contain within an area. We've had some outflows, they've been reported. Uh, one of our issues is the location that we're currently burning. That's why I'm excited about the prospect of moving out of the pit to burn. There's more opportunities to contain ash in there. We're burning and stacking the ash right within a pretty significant drainage swell. So with, uh, Mr. Candelaria that's taken measures to contain a lot of that ash and they've been working uh, with the recent storms, but we're almost to the capacity of space there. I have, uh, visited with Chief Vance on creating more space there by cleaning up some of the stuff with the auction, everything else, but it's going to buy us a little bit of time. So I hope the alternative of being able to burn within the pit, uh, will come to play because it's, it's going to be a whole lot easier to contain the ash within that pit than what we're doing with it now.
And just so the council knows, uh, Mr. Mayor, the, um, I've talked with, uh, Chief Vance, uh, and Director Eppert, this week, and so, uh, the plan is this winter, once we get snow on the ground, is going to be the best time to start burning out what's in the pit. And so we're going to be pulling together a plan to start that process so that hopefully by the time the snow melts, the pit will be available for, um, all of our, uh, burning and slash.
Good. Um, before we move on to item D, I'll just ask, we're going on two hours, if anybody wants to take a short break. We're good to go. What do you anticipate, Brett?
Finally, very quick.
Okay, well, let's just move on to item D then. We were, uh, review personnel.
So, um, this is going to be a, um, Mr. Mayor, Council, uh, this is going to be a process. Uh, what I presented to you was a rewrite, uh, just to go back and give you a little guys, a little bit of history. Uh, we had a personnel issue, um, early in the, uh, in this, um, in, in our, uh, being in charge of the village, uh, that brought in legal counsel from the New Mexico Municipal League, required them to come in and, and take over since they're our insurance agent. Uh, they took over the proceedings. In doing so, they reviewed our ordinance and, uh, I'll be nice and say that they thought our ordinance was not good. And so because it was in such poor condition, the municipal league volunteered to have one of their lawyers rewrite our ordinance. Uh, this is back when we were, uh, struggling with our own legal counsel. They volunteered to do it for free. Um, as you can see, the first page of this, it says repealing ordinance 2019. So 2019 was the last time it was updated and that wasn't even a significant update. But, um, this is quite lengthy, it's quite detailed. Um, I have presented this to our HR director and all of the director reports, uh, at the village. I have asked for them to review it and give feedback. And my goal is to, uh, go through this, see if we can get some agreement from within the management team on any issues that are, um, being questioned. And then present it to our legal counsel, now that we have one, that we, our legal firm that we hired has somebody with a lot of experience in personnel issues. As a matter of fact, that's what she basically does is handles all personnel issues, uh, that come before this, um, our legal counsel. So we will present it to her for final draft. Then we'll come to the council and like any other ordinance, ask for permission to move forward. Then we'll advertise, we'll have a public hearing and then we'll ask you to vote on it. Um, so I, I know we're behind schedule, at least a month behind. Uh, but, uh, what I originally committed to the council on doing. So I, I'm hoping by the end of October, we can have a new ordinance in place. And what I'd like to ask you to do is take the time to read it. Any questions you have, please come forward. Feel free to talk to my direct reports about this and get their thoughts and feedback. And, uh, to try and understand it, this is a very important ordinance. This ordinance has literally cost the village hundreds of thousands of dollars because it was so poorly written. And outdated.
And there, there's some highlights in here, are those for any specific reason or?
The, uh, I'm sorry, the highlights?
Yeah, there's some.
Though, um, those were some things that, uh, that the, um, Director of HR provided her feedback. Before I release it to y'all, I wanted to give it to her and, and, uh, just to make sure that she didn't think it was, you know, totally out of whack. So those highlighted items are her areas of concern. And, um, you can see a slightly different font on those pages where she, it's not easy to determine that if you read it, you'll see it's not legalese, it's just her expressing an opinion on some of those things. But it wasn't, her take on it wasn't, wasn't, it was reasonable with some tweaking. Um, I do know that I've already had conversations with the Chief of Police and he's going to recommend some pretty significant changes. But this is for y'all to start going through, get comfortable with. Ask questions over the next two months. I want to make sure at the end of the period, you guys are comfortable on voting in favor of whatever ordinance ultimately, uh, we present.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on to our final item E, uh, proofread the recreation and trails charter.
So the Trails and Rep Committee, which is now, it is now the Trails and Rep Committee, uh, since, um, they felt important to try to, um, prevent what happened with the last administration from happening again to where, um, we have to start from scratch, basically. So, um, the idea is to, uh, have a five-year plan so that carries over to the new administration. Alternating chairs so that you're not, you know, replacing the whole board from scratch again. Priorities, uh, where we've already, we'll be presenting to the next council meeting. The top priorities as far as, um, moving forward with our recommendations for trails and recreation. We'll also need to be, uh, we, we've got a new community, community member. And then we've included a representative from AFPO and, uh, the MBHS, uh, to, to the committee. We'll have to work with the architectural committee, I think we follow the same. So Jackie, I don't know, we'll figure that one out. But that's the idea behind this charter is so that, um, and as well as record keeping. I think we lost a lot of the records from the prior trails committee and, uh, Brett, fortunately Brett was able to find some stuff so we could work out better.
So Mr. Mayor, I would like to say that, um, I think we should consider making this a requirement for all of our committees to have a charter that comes before the, the council for approval. You know, I, I think in the, uh, beginning of this administration, we had a lot of issues going on and, and we were kind of flying by the seat of our pants, but now as things start to come under control and settle a little bit, I think we need to start looking towards our committees and, uh, asking them to do that. This is great work, I think.
Would, would you? Just for ongoing committees, because for instance, the dark sky committee, I think has done great work, but we may get to a point where they don't need to meet anymore. So, so for all committees or just ongoing committees?
I, I think it should be, uh, a requirement for all committees. Uh, even though, um, you know, committees that are short-term, it may not be as big of an effort. But number one, this tells the, uh, council what the intent of the committee is. And number two, it's a document for the public to go to. And without these documents, I've had many people comprehensive plan, we all know what that is, right? Well, there's a lot of people in public that don't understand what that is. And what is a comprehensive plan committee doing? And I'm trying to describe to them what it's doing. Had we this document, I could just say here, this is what they're doing.
Can I ask you to put this to you?
So the committee all worked together and they each filled in these lines and, and, uh, each, each member. And then went through from line to line with each members and, and kind of built on that.
Great job. Any other discussion on, uh, Recreation and Trail Committee Charter? If not, we'll adjourn with work session.